Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the City Commission meeting for El Dorado, September 3, 2019. We'll have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis is absent, Mayor Haynes?
Present.
Commissioner Badway?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Present.
Thank you. Move on for invocation, do we have Reverend Mark Somerville? Excuse me, Somerville from Family Worship Center. This is a Monday happening on a Tuesday, if everybody was wondering.
Two Mondays this week.
Yes.
Shall we pray? Our gracious Father, we come to you this evening. We're thankful that you hear and answer our prayers. Tonight our hearts are touched by those that are on the East Coast and those in the Bahamas this evening that have suffered such loss during this hurricane. We just pray your comfort, your strength will be with the families during this time. We ask you again for your wisdom and guidance in this city council meeting. We thank you for our council members, we pray you'll bless them, in Christ's name, amen.
Thank you. So then we have a special guest tonight, which would be the First Baptist Church Youth Group to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you want to come forward, please, and tell us your name? And, um, thank you, and then we will let you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My name is Lily.
My name is Rayleigh.
Hi, I'm Sarah Rose.
I'm Lauren Rose.
I'm Ellie Grove.
I'm Faith Grove.
I'm Akin Rose.
I'm Lila Spradlin.
I'm DJ Middleton.
I'm Noah Gale, and we're the youth from First Baptist Church.
All right, thank you. Well, would you all join in? Join us, stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you to the First Baptist Church Youth Group for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Not having any proclamations or recognitions tonight, we'll move on to personal appearances. And having none of those either, public comments. Anyone from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on from public comments to consent agenda. The commission, the items on the consent agenda, and this information was sent out, I think last week, we had a chance to read through it. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. With no old business from previous meetings, we'll move on to new business in our agenda. Item number 11, tax increment financing policy.
City Commission, the policy before you will take the guidelines that have been established by the state and also some local guidelines that we've established for the use of TIF and prepare a local policy for any development that would like to request the use of tax increment financing to assist with redevelopment costs in the city. There are only specific opportunities to use TIF, you have to meet state statute. But more specifically for the use of TIF locally, this will establish a local fee for the application, as well as an application process, an application form, for folks that are desiring to utilize tax increment financing, as well as some of the local guidelines that the city would like to include in our policy. Examples of that would include applicants are eligible for IRBs or industrial revenue bonds, however, they are not eligible for a property tax abatement. They are only eligible for the sales tax exemption portion of an IRB. So that's allocated here, or allotted, articulated here in the policy. Also included in there is the method of financing that the city will entertain for the use of TIF. There are several opportunities for financing, but the primary ones the city will focus on will be special obligation bonds, direct reimbursement to the developer, or also those cash financing, pledge of tax increment financing revenues to pay private financing, or any combination of those methods. The city can utilize general obligation bond financing, but our preference will be to not utilize that method of financing, and only in the case where there is a city at large benefit, and the City Commission will opt to make a finding to that fact in the event that that is requested by an applicant. The primary use of TIF is to capture the incremental increase in taxable valuation increase from a redevelopment proposal, and that can be allotted for a period of up to 20 years. It will sunset prior to that 20-year period if the infrastructure is paid for in the time it takes, either 20 years or less, depending on how long it will take for that infrastructure to be paid for. And again, tax increment financing can certainly be used to finance public infrastructure, such as sidewalks, drainage, water and sewer lines, parking facilities, not any horizontal, not any vertical development that would be privately utilized. So it's important to note that this is a public financing method, and it's not eligible for private uses. The other thing that is in the policy is the City Commission has the ability to waive any provision within the policy, subject, of course, to state law. And then finally, there is a sunset date on the policy of December 31, 2022, meaning that at that point in time, the policy will sunset unless the City Commission decides to either amend the policy or continue it for a definite period of time. So with that, I'll take any questions that you only have.
And the city's never used this before.
That's correct.
Is this a new tool for us?
That's correct. The City of El Dorado has never used tax increment financing.
And I notice you don't have one that was expected. Is that just, is that not ready yet?
You mean a resolution?
No, the, the, we were expecting to get one from Orshelins?
Oh, yeah, that application is not going to be submitted yet, so we're just moving forward tonight with the policy.
Okay.
This is exactly what we talked about at work session.
Yeah. Something we've talked about a couple times, and then read through this pretty thoroughly at our last work session, so. Any further questions or comments? If none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the tax increment financing policy of the city of El Dorado, Kansas.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Further question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. That was not a roll call vote, right?
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll move to our next item on the agenda, which will be Main Street Memorandum of Understanding. This is also a topic we've been talking, we've been looking at, and an agreement we've looked at several times, but David, you want to have any other introduction or comment on this topic?
The memorandum of understanding before you tonight is a memorandum of understanding with Main Street Association of El Dorado. The memorandum outlines the services that the city is purchasing for its annual contribution of $30,000 to Main Street. That scope of services is delineated in the memorandum of understanding, as well as the memo put in your packet. It focuses primarily on the rehabilitation and preservation of downtown buildings, as well as facilitating business opportunities within the downtown district, and events, and different things. The primary focus is on the historic downtown district of El Dorado. The MOU is largely mirrored after the MOU we had with El Dorado Inc., so many of the provisions are the same, except for the specific provisions that relate to Main Street Association. So with that, I'll take any questions that you only have regarding the agreement.
Explain to me what a infrastructure without walls loan is.
The IWW?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there someone from Main Street here that would like to answer that question? Come on up, thank you.
First, it is an investment without walls, not infrastructure.
Oh, that was a, I can err on our part.
These are loans that are given, not given, but provided to people who want to do rehab of buildings, do some work with inside a building. And we will loan up to $20,000 to a given individual or organization. They have to apply for it, they have to let us know what they're going to do, they set a certain timeframe. We lend them the money at a 0% interest. And we have a set amount, we have a hundred, we have about $89,000 right now that we constantly loan out. As it comes back in, we'll loan it out to somebody else.
You say that's investment without walls?
Right.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank. So we're going to make that change to this?
Yeah, does that go to make a difference on?
No. That change will be on the first page, so we'll change it.
Okay.
We'll change that and bring out a new copy.
Okay. Thank you, Kendra, for catching that. Any other questions? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to direct the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with the El Dorado Main Street Association.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Further comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be commission terms. Something that we discussed and came to consensus on at our last work session, or maybe two ago. This is, uh, yeah, this is where we locally adopt the terms of our elected body, right? So, state legislature allowed us to do sometime between, excuse me, the 1st of December to the 2nd, I think Monday in January. This body has elected to do the changing of the, of the commission at the first meeting after, no, it would be the first meeting in December each, each election cycle, so. Is there any other question or comment from the commission on this? David, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, that's pretty much what the ordinance will read. Officials should be sworn in at the first meeting in December of each municipal election year. Any ordinances in conflict therewith will be repealed with the passage of this ordinance.
Do you have an ordinance number?
G-1311.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance G-1311 and ordinance amended section 2.0, 4.090 of the city of El Dorado's municipal code pertaining to the terms of the city commission.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further conversation, question? All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis is absent, the motion passes.
Motion passes four to zero. With this motion, we shorten my term by a month.
Congratulations.
Question?
All right, thank you, Paul. Next on our agenda is Cox Wireless Small Cell Franchise Agreement. This is another topic we discussed at length at our work session. Any, David, do you have anything you want to add to this?
The only thing I'd say is that the franchise agreement before you, it will grant Cox Wireless Access LLC the ability to develop, or develop, it will develop a framework for the installation of distributed antenna systems, or otherwise known as DAS systems, for use throughout the city. These systems will enhance, they're intended to enhance the wireless network access that third-party carriers will have the ability to provide throughout El Dorado. Cox Wireless will actually be constructing and operating the antennas, but they will lease that broadband space to third parties, such as T-Mobile, or Verizon, or Sprint. And so they will, they will be paid a lease payment from those companies. The city, on the other hand, we will receive a $150 annual payment per attachment, which is fairly standard in the industry right now. Many communities in the state don't yet have one of these agreements, but this will allow for these antennas to be installed throughout the city as needed to enhance areas where there are clearly not enough bandwidth to support the wireless connectivity that's needed in that area. And it's also going to be an important component as the industry moves from 4G to 5G wireless rollout here the next several years. So with that, I'll take any questions that you only have with respect to the franchise agreement.
Any questions? No, I think, I think in general, I felt like the conversations we had were very positive. So, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to direct, move direct the mayor to sign the franchise agreement granting a franchise and authorizing Cox Wireless Access LLC, a wholly owned subsidiary of Fox, or Cox Communication, to construct, maintain, and operate as a wireless infrastructure provider in the public right-of-way within the city of El Dorado, Kansas.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further conversation, discussion? I have one thing, is what, what constitutes this as the mayor directed, rather than we direct the city manager to make this agreement?
Probably because that's just how it was written.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think there's any requirement that it be the mayor and/or the city manager, I don't think there's any.
Sometimes give you the authorization to sign those agreements? And, I'm okay, I just was curious if there was a reason back and forth for that?
I mean, the truth of the matter is that it was probably the mayor that signed the template that we were given, so we just filled in that as the position, so.
Okay.
I think the important thing is that whoever signs, the commission directs to sign on behalf of the city.
Okay.
So we have some kind of action.
All right, that, that's kind of really where I was headed.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. We're on a roll. Next on our agenda would be reports from the city commission and advisory updates. Anybody have any?
The Parks and Rec Advisory Board met. We had kind of a reorganization-type meeting, letting the members of the Park and Rec Board decide what it is. They felt as an advisory board, they wanted to do to help out the city. So once they got that all worked out, they feel very confident that they can now start meeting on a more regular basis, and have a quorum in the meeting, and will feel like they're actually getting some input into Parks and Rec, as opposed to just hearing a report of how Parks and Rec's doing. So they feel very good about being able to actually do something that's going to amount to something. So then at our last work session, Kevin Wishart reported to us at that meeting about the Parks and Rec meeting, and he also wanted to share this. Starting this fall with the recreation program, we have flag football, we have volleyball, and we have soccer. There are 49 teams, and of those 49 teams, we still need 26 coaches. So if you're a parent, and you have a child playing flag football, volleyball, or soccer, you could definitely help out by volunteering to be a coach. If you're a high school student, have nothing better to do on a Saturday morning, you could come out and volunteer as a coach. Anybody is welcome. You do not have to be overly qualified. You do kind of need to know the rules of football, soccer, and volleyball, but we need 26 coaches to be able to get this season going. So if you're willing to help out, contact the rec department and let them know that you want to volunteer to be a coach. Thank you. Off my soapbox. That's all.
Kendra? Thank you, Kendra.
Convention and tourism committee has not met yet, but we will meet next month. Molly will be back, and she's, she's got some things that she's really excited about. I, since our, the notice went out last week on the recycling announcement, I'm sure all of you guys have talked to numerous people and numerous phone calls. And the one thing that I really wanted, I think that needs to be heard from us, and I'm going to say it, I'm saying it on behalf of all four of us, or five of us actually, is that we had come by that lightly. That decision came over two and a half, three years of discussion of the issues and the problems and the costs and, you know, changing waste stream and all this stuff that Brad talks to us about. It was not, it, we, we just didn't come up with it, you know, overnight. So, and I think that was really the biggest thing that I had to reiterate to our citizens, people that called me, was is that we just didn't do a split decision, which is, okay, well, now it's done, you know, fine. We've, this has been a topic for a very long time, and it's been lived along, and it was time to pull the Band-Aid off the wound, and this was what we had to do. So, I just, I, I think it needed to be said, said out loud, public for people here. That, that decision did not come lightly, so. Other than that, I really feel like Labor Day went off without a hitch too bad in town, and that's all that counts.
All right, thank you. I do not have anything, any particular report. Library board meeting's coming up, so I think I'm going to be able to make this one. Apologize for sometimes missing those, but the library also celebrated its, its 60th year at Bradford, so we had that ribbon cutting and celebration party down there last Friday. So, that was, that was a nice event. And had representation from the South Central Kansas Library. I'm going to get all those acronyms right, but Paul did a great job of saying a few things about, about this library, and what it does for our community. So, with that, we'll move on to city manager report.
Just a few things. Very soon you'll be seeing some construction equipment being moved about town. We'll be implementing our mill overlay schedule for the upcoming season. We'll be doing some work on Sixth Avenue from Constant Creek to El Reiko, as well as some neighborhood streets around Denver, primarily north of Central, so those will be starting up soon. We were actually going to also be doing Havrehill Road, but in light of Holly Frontier's turnaround that's coming up, we're going to postpone that for one season and put that one on the spur next year, so that we don't have to coordinate around that and deal with 2,000 vehicles to and fro and that sort of thing. Even though the, the project will be pretty short-lived, we thought it would be best to, to do that, given that that will be the case on, on that street. Our tennis court project is moving along very quickly, and it's, dare I say, nearly completed. Most of the work that needs to be done now is cleanup work, and seeding and, and sawding. In fact, the teams have already started practicing on the courts, and from what I understand, they, they are very appreciative of, of the, of the courts. And in fact, this Thursday, we're going to have our first invitational tournament, as the El Dorado Middle School will be hosting its invitational tournament at the complex. So if you're out and about Thursday afternoon, swing by and see some middle school tennis on the new tennis court complex. That will be, that is already getting some attention. In addition to that, we'd like to welcome you all, as well as the general public, to the ribbon cutting ceremony for the tennis court complex on September 11th, beginning at 5:30, at the tennis court complex, of course. And then following that, we'll come back over here and have a meeting as long as we can keep it over here. So again, September 11th, 5:30, we've got a number of different folks, we'll have the tennis teams, we're going to have the, I've been told, the drum line will perform, and so we've got some different activities that'll be helping us bring that complex into, into its commencement, I guess. The Lantern Festival is scheduled for September 14th at El Dorado Lake. If you haven't purchased tickets, let me know, and we can try to hook you up with that. And as I mentioned, Holly Frontier's turnaround will begin this, the middle of this month, and will continue through about the middle of November. We'll have about 2,000 people in town, so there will be more traffic on the roads during the beginning of the day and in the after, or late afternoon, and throughout the day, so people need to be mindful of that. Hopefully our restaurant lines will be a little bit longer, so you may have to have a little more patience, but definitely as you're driving around, particularly during shifts, when shifts get out, be careful and drive safe, and just keep your eye out for, for that kind of thing. The last thing that I have is sales tax is still performing rather well. For the last month, August receipts, which were June sales tax, or, I'm sorry, June sales ta, sales, we brought in $209,625, which represents a 2.7% increase year-to-date for our collections. So we still are up for sales tax, and we'll continue to report on that, so you all know where we're at. And the last thing I'll say for the general public, in case they may have missed it, The Butler Times Gazette will no longer be printing three times a week, they're going to go two times a week, on Tuesday and Saturday. So any official notices in the newspaper will be cut to twice a week instead of three times a week. We're trying to figure out ways to accommodate that by putting information on our website. That is something that is going to happen here soon. So with that, I'll take any questions that you only have.
All right, thank you. You may have any questions? I think none. Next on our agenda would be executive session. I'm trying to think about timeline for that. I think, as we start, I guess I would suggest maybe 20 minutes.
Okay.
I'm ready.
I move to recess into executive session pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KSA 75-4319B1 for the purposes of discussing the city manager's annual evaluation and to reconvene the meeting at 7:20 PM in the city commission room.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded into retiring executive session. Okay, so I'm moved and seconded into retiring executive session, can reconvene the city commission at seven twenty, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries four to zero, thank you, and I-